Thoroughly because I knew that we had February to, you know, make the motion, but you know.
And I brought it up too, I think it's something we need to get on top of here.
Yeah, because I just don't want it to wait till the end and we scramble.
We can wait till the next meeting when.
Let's, yeah.
Solid, make it solid.
There's nothing.
You know, a lot of guys visit with some people, probably tell them what we're thinking and get a feel too.
I've, I've thrown the hundred dollar a mile out to guys, and I've never said that's what it's gonna be.
When you throw that out, it does not hurt to mention that we do think it's too cheap, but it's our starting point.
Yeah. I mean, it, it is gonna fluctuate over a hundred thousand dollars.
Helps pay for some fuel.
Which we're saving this month, this year again, uh, you know, so far. Um, but do you guys, do you, oh, is, I don't know if this is on the agenda, I don't know if I missed it. Um, has there been, and this is off the road department, but has there been any talk about snow removal at the courthouse?
Yeah.
It's gonna come up here at the end of the meeting, and it's only in that Kami is leaving for ten days. At the end of, it's either at the end of January or the very beginning of February. And we would just need to know that if there is a snow event, that that would be handled.
There has been someone that reached out to me about snow removal for the courthouse. They heard through the rumor, they said that there was possibly gonna be some opening for snow removal at the courthouse. This gentleman reached out to me and said he would do it.
Is he bringing a dozer?
No, um, and he would, he would, uh, he has a very similar outfit they just bought to what we have. And I said, well, we would use ours, not yours. And he says, I'm perfectly capable of running that because I basically have the same outfit.
That's a good idea. Um, just for clarification, we were paying Leon to do this?
I've been pushing it across.
But I mean before.
Yeah, so with, with us, with Huey sticking around this winter and gonna be down here in a couple of months and, and looking forward to a conversation we'll have later for the fairgrounds is, is that when we go out, we got three drivers that take off in our three plow trucks, and we have eight blades that go out. And that leaves me. So these, these mornings where we have had snow, I've tried to get up here with the payloader.
Yeah.
When Kami's pushing snow and push everything across and even hit this parking lot over here to try to save her some time. And I have no issue doing that, um, because you're not paying me what it costs to have, nothing against Leon or Wayne, but you know, I mean, right now, I'm perfectly capable of helping Kami out to get the snow.
I think that'd be great if we could keep doing that.
Yes, and I will, and I told Kami I would.
But so this other individual, what would we pay him?
Well, he asked. He says, well, what, you know, what, I said, I don't know. And he says, well, he says, if I'm running, if I'm running your equipment, he says, I'd probably do it for twenty-five or thirty dollars. Twenty, between twenty-five and thirty-five dollars an hour to come running.
And if he's running his own equipment, it's gonna be a hundred bucks.
Yeah, and I, minimum. And, and he says, he basically said, what you have, he has a ten twenty-five, it's a cab, John Deere tractor with the blower attached. It's, it's just smaller than what we have. And I guess the reason I brought it up is because he would be willing to run our equipment that we have. We made a large purchase to get that equipment.
Yep.
And one of the main reasons we did that and made that per- purchase was to keep skid steers and stuff off of our pavement sidewalks. And who, who, if you hire somebody else to do it, we're right back probably to square one unless that person's willing to run our equipment.
You know, it isn't that often you get somebody coming forward to offer doing a job.
With our equipment.
With our equipment.
I think this is something we should probably really consider.
And so I did mention to him, I said, this is something where you're gonna be up at five in the morning. He says, fine. I said, we gotta, I said, we gotta have the building open at eight. I said, we need to get the sidewalks, I said, and there is gonna be some shovel work. They said, you can, you're not just, yep, he goes, I understand.
What do you guys think?
Well, Kami's reached out to me and she says, you know, I wasn't really part of the job description when I was hired, and I'll do it, but if it's, you know. She doesn't like coming here at four in the morning and being overwhelmed, so I think if we need help, help her in some regard. She, she'll do some of it, but in certain cases, she needs help.
Well, she can't do any of it if she's not here.
Yeah.
And that's, that's really what this conversation starts as, is we gotta make sure it's taken care of when she's gone.
Will this particular person do that this winter yet?
Yeah.
Okay. Question is, I know this is bringing up a can of worms with him, you might as well talk about it, he's working for us. What happens if something happens to him?
Well, he would have to be.
He's an employee.
He would have to be an employee, I would assume he would have to come in. He would have to be, uh, I suppose he would have to come in, fill out the forms, and be a seasonal part-time employee, I would assume down there.
Where you don't have to deal with all the.
It's, if he used his own equipment, then he'd just be a vendor, and then he's on his own. And so there's pluses and minuses, both ways you look at this.
Yep.
You know, if, uh, you know, it's no different than we have certain elements of our taxes taken care of by Tony. Okay, she's an independent contractor, she's your own vendor, so if she gets hurt at work, that's her deal, it's not Wells County's thing. Now, if we hire this man, he is our responsibility. If he's just a vendor, then he's not, that's all.
But if we hire him, he's no different than any of the workers that are on the road department.
Well, while they are different in that you don't have to pay state.
We're right.
Retirement tax because they're part-time.
It's like saying those, we hire summer help.
Right.
It'd be the same as that.
It would be seasonal.
It'd be part-time help.
Because, if you hire an employee, you're doing payroll deductions and things of that nature. Whereas if you pay a vendor and he gives you a bill for six hundred bucks, you pay him six hundred bucks and that's the end of it.
He's an independent contractor.
And I certainly can, I mean, I guess we never had this conversation, but he prob, he would probably rather turn in a bill, but I don't know how that works if he's using our equipment.
You, you don't, you don't want to employ this person, in my estimation. Because he is going to work when, when needed.
When needed.
I don't know, I don't ever come in here two hours every morning and do something. You don't, I don't believe you want this person as an employee, you wanna.
But can you hire him as like quote-unquote independent contractor if he's, if he's using all of our equipment?
I don't know, I'll have to look into that.
You know what I mean?
Not asking you to look into it.
Right.
And if he breaks your stuff, you're, you're liable.
Well, and that'd be no different than an employee, that's okay. It's, it's illegal.
Okay, with, with Kami being overwhelmed, coming in so early, would this guy, when there is a snow event.
He lives two blocks from the courthouse.
Huh?
He lives two blocks from the courthouse.
So would he come help for an hour to keep things moving quicker?
I'm sure he would.
That, that sounds.
We had a very basic conversation about it.
I mean, uh, we don't know how many snow events.
It would help her moral support wise at least, because he feels overwhelmed. Because like Brent says, the place opens at a certain time, you gotta have it all cleared off.
Well, and you know, I tried to get ahold of Kami, you know, Chris and I, when we have a conversations about the courthouse closures and stuff. Usually that morning, I'm out before six, and I've had a conversation with Chris by six. And when we make this, when I call Chris and he, he, and he, alright, this is what we're gonna do, the first person that I call is Kami.
Right.
Because I don't want her on the road at six AM if the courthouse isn't opening till ten. You know, wait till it gets light, you know, so, but I mean, we're trying to make it as.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we're trying to coordinate with Kami, and you know, the one morning I called her and I said, Kami, have you left yet? She says, no, I'm getting ready to, stay where you're at. Number one, it's not, the roads are bad, you can't see, but it's actually not a lot of snow by the courthouse right now, and we're not gonna open till ten. You know, so I let her know, I don't want her halfway here, and then we decided to close the courthouse.
So I got a suggestion, you guys, what do you think? Let's let Brent and Dan figure this out, how to hire this guy to do this.
We'll find out what he wants on, on his own, I mean, there's, there's no better way than to try it for a little bit to see if it works that way.
Let those guys figure it out. Hey, him an hour late, wait, great, as a contract.
I, I, I feel that he would rather not have a W two, he would rather turn it down.
That's simpler for Dan, and the whole monkey thing.
Just a matter of if he has to use his equipment or.
One other real quick thing here, uh, we got it on here, the road weight scales, at our six county meeting, discussion was that all six counties get together, hire a deputy, have weight scales to.
Maybe a day a week in each county or whatever to be, be in the area.
Yeah, um, more to think of that, it might be way off the wall, but more to think of that, how much of our revenue comes from our farmers, they gotta move their product. So yeah, we find some of them, the minute we find a couple, this guy's gonna be out of work. And we're gonna pay big money to hire somebody to do this stuff. You know what I'm saying?
To me. You lost me.
Yeah.
Who's gonna be out of work?
This guy, this deputy that we hired, to run scales.
Once he established that it's gonna happen, people are gonna comply, and then there's no reason to do it again.
Well, it is, so we're gonna.
We don't, we don't want him to stop twenty trucks a day that are overweight, we hope that everybody's a body.
We're gonna be paying a lot of money for this.
Oh, that way.
We're gonna pay probably more money than we'll take in after a while.
Probably, but if the philosophy is it saves on our roads, then it's maybe worth it.
Well, my other thing along with that is a little education, and some, maybe it was you told me, most of these guys never get out of their truck when they get to the elevator. But if we have a big sign on each elevator saying, help protect our roads, keep your loads, uh, under, in the law, watch your speed, stuff, a little education.
The only thing that concerns me is, is right now, there, there are two things that is a waste of time, but it's a necessary, we need to do it. Putting load restrictions on in the spring.
Yeah.
I mean, we have to do it, every county does, okay? But I promise you, if there, you, if there's no threat that you're gonna get in trouble, then why obey? Okay, if there hasn't been an overweight ticket written in this county forever, unless a state highway, unless a state highway patrolman stops them.
Well, they used to do that, whatever happened to that?
Well, they're thin too, you know, I mean, I, you know, I mean, I, they, they will patrol, and they'll, they'll occasionally stop someone.
They've got one, but they, they are.
I think Burgum and all that, a few years ago, legis, not legislatively, but bureaucratically, just downplayed all of that. I mean, kind of in your camp, that they were just easier on.
I haven't heard them doing anything around the areas.
No, no.
We haven't collected a green cart.
Unless the highway patrolman has gotten one, uh, in the last two years, I mean, there's.
But they don't come around, I mean, back before you, Mel would report, that was a pretty big income, but it was always the highway patrol. But those guys were out and about, they're not anymore.
Well, we just don't, you don't see as many highway patrolmen.
So I brought it up for discussion, because this'll probably come up down at our next six county meeting again. What are you guys' feelings on that, Joe?
Well.
First of all, I think it's gonna be harder than I can find to hire somebody to do it. Then you gotta provide a vehicle, you gotta provide them a full-time job, which is insurance benefits, blah, blah, blah.
This was gonna be kind of split between the six counties?
But I think down at a rough figure that even at that, each county's gonna be paying over twenty-some thousand.
Minimum, twenty-five grand.
Right.
A year.
Yeah, I figured out that at that meeting.
We gotta hire Ward to do it, he'll catch you.
Yeah.
The, uh. Well, if you get somebody to catch people, then it's a matter of, you know, you wanna be the bad guy, do you wanna give people warnings? You know, and, you know, are you doing this to make money, or are you doing it to protect roads? There's a lot of philosophy behind why you're doing it.
Right, right.
Each county is law enforcement, but doesn't wanna be the guy doing their job.
They're elected.
But.
Ideally, you could find someone who could just do it part-time and could be a part-time sheriff for some county also. In the perfect world, but I don't know if that individually exists.
And then which county wants to free up their guy to go serve another county?
Exactly.
Cause everybody is supposedly short-staffed. This would be, I mean, and it isn't just Wells County farmers that are breaking the rules. You got all those trucks coming to Kitter County and Benson County and Tiddy County and Foster County.
Sheriff's, Sheriff's the worst.
Do you, do you guys know, because I don't, and I'm not gonna pretend I do, can a highway patrolman or a sheriff, or sheriff's deputy, follow a truck into the scale and look at their waist?
And don't believe they can.
Nope. Minnesota, they can, but North Dakota.
They can, Minnesota, you got thirty days, they can look back thirty days, North Dakota, you cannot. You cannot, well, that's the good old boys' rule, and I've heard that, privacy rights or.
But I have a way of funding that guy in the Wells County. Okay, last meeting, we sat here, and we got told by the water board chairman that they do not pay for legal fees with county money. It's all out of the assessed drains. Well, I went back in the budget and I started looking. Requested for department for twenty twenty-five, we all got it, right here. Salary, mileage, and expenses, secretary treasurer, forty thousand. Sykeston Dam, five thousand, legal fees, thirty-five thousand. Engineering services, thirty-five thousand. Well, if all of that stuff that they do legally comes out of the assessed drains, why are we paying thirty-five thousand?
Those legal fees are just for those assessed drains, not for all of the other stuff.
No, no, that's not what he told me.
Well.
Cause I asked him about that, and he said, he said, well, the assessed drains take care of all the legal fees.
Yeah, we got that, we got that on the list here, where Dan and I talked about having each of those people come in and explain their life.
Okay.
And then we can have that.
Case.
But I, I hear what you're saying. Let's finish this up though, I think everybody think about that weight deal, we've got till, when's it, do we have a meeting before the next, uh?
It's in March.
March, yeah, so think about it till next week, anyway, before we have our next six county meeting.
How much do five cardboard cutouts of a patrol car look like?
Or weight scales.
No, I mean, it, I feel something needs to be done, because right now, it's a free-for-all. There's, there's no excuse not to break the law.
Here's another option, if, if we don't wanna be the bad guy, and this is down on, uh, 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 number eight legislative priorities, we could lobby our legislators to increase the state as far as their regulatory people. So they come around more often, and we don't have to do it.
Right.
Like it used to be, the old days.
Right. Yeah, good idea, good luck. Who was the truck, he lived over here in the corner? When you go up that dead end street, he was the truck right before.
Oh, really?
Yeah, when I was a kid coming.
Okay. Well, it's, it's, yeah, it's an unpopular job, but unfortunately, it's a, for counties like us that have pavement, the, every, all these counties, none of these paved roads were ever built for even eighty thousand, more or less what they're hauling now.
That's a huge old problem.
Yep, and, and it's, it's, you know, we're sitting here trying to figure out how we're gonna fund to fix this highway and that highway and that highway. Well, I mean, I, I mean, I don't want any of these guys to get tickets either, but if I do, I would never get stopped, I would speed all the time. I'm just being honest.
And, yeah.
Yeah, that whole idea of, well, people know how fast to drive, no, I don't.
As far as that blade, you know, you got some damn combine operator that sometimes fills a truck too full.
I do know one thing, that new bridge I got put in, nobody fights, there will be no headers going across there.
Yeah, I saw that.
You seen the bridge markers?
Yep.
Yeah.
What'll happen in two years, it'll be totally different because they're gonna get busted.
They'll get busted, they'll get busted by, long before they.
We gotta move along.
Okay, is there anything you guys have for me?
Well, we have a couple of things, as far as if we're going back to this whole township meeting, and maybe this isn't the time to, that we need to instill in him, the number one thing this last spring that he really didn't get done as much as it should have been, was.
Shoulder pulling.
Shoulder pulling.
Yeah.
I mean, we need to ask them, how many mo, and then we need, we need to make that a priority and get it done. And the idea of, wow, it's too wet, it rained, it, no, we, that just has to be done, whatever it takes.
Well, I think.
And that, that's telling them that we're, we're going the extra mile to do that.
We have twelve miles right now lined up that will be done as the immediate we can get out there, as soon as we get our tractor, there's no snow, we got twelve miles. We have prioritized because that didn't get done last year.
Well, I know, but I think the townships have started to realize that, hey, that really does help.
It does.
The requests we get will do more than historically what we've done, and that'll help justify this hundred or a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars, whatever we're gonna.
We had, we had.
Go, go ahead.
Here's, here's the other thing I'd like, we should have the right, and now we're gonna sound like bad guys, don't put this in the paper. We have the right to deny blading if the road is so bad that a blade can't help. And here's an example, East of Monte Knutson, that guy that just ticks me off, that township has all the money in the world.
That's what I was.
They've agreed to put clay on there, and they won't, and now, you know who gets beat up there? The poor ma, blade guy.
Yeah.
Can't you fix that?
Ain't got nothing there to work with.
It ain't his fault. So we should be able to say, we ain't blading it until you fix it.
That, that road was bladed pro, I, I guarantee you, he bladed it more than any other road, and it still didn't, I mean.
And he tried very diligently, he came, he went down, he brought material up, he tried everything he could. Now, their excuse has been.
Uh, they always have an excuse.
Their excuse has been, when the bridge is finished, we're gonna do it, we need to go to their meeting this year, you and I, Brent, and we need to make sure that that's done.
There you go.
All right, right.
That's cause the, the other road is opened up now.
Yep, well, the, now that the bridge is in, that was their excuse, we're not gonna fix it till the bridge, because it's just gonna get wrecked.
We had several blade operators this fall that pulled shoulders on secondary roads without the shouldering disc. They went down on secondary roads and pulled shoulders because they knew they weren't gonna be opened up in the winter, and they had all winter.
Sure, sure.
Um, and we've reached out to townships and told them, listen, if you have some secondary roads, because we, with one shouldering disc, we just, it, every spring is different, now, we're gonna solve one problem, because we're not gonna have guys out at the fairgrounds as often as we did in the past, okay? So we're gonna have more time, but it, it, every spring is different, you guys know it, some springs it rains like it did for three, four, five weeks, and nobody got in the field. But, um, these secondary roads, we can pull shoulders in the fall on these roads, after they mow them. If they get out there and mow them in October, a lot of these guys can go work on these secondaries and pull and be aggressive, and it has all winter to sit there, if there's a little winter, who cares, we're not opening it in the winter anyway.
Right, the other thing is in the spring, you know, when that frost is just coming out, and there's like two inches to play with, that blade can reach down and pull that before anything gets, before anything gets growing, it's a very good time to mix it with.
Well, that's when we want, that's why we wanna do it in the spring.
But I mean, I mean, besides the shouldering disc, just, just when that frost is coming out, pull it.
The two, the two Harvey operators especially are pulling more shoulders now without the, without the shouldering disc, they like to get down in the ditch and do it. Tristan's reaching out now, he's, and so.
Buckwitz is good at it.
Oh, man, he's pro. Sometimes we gotta get him back up on the road.
And you're good at it, so in turn, I would instill that narrow window, you need to be out there.
Yep.
Alright, that's.
Here, here's another example, and I'll use the one in Sheridan County, I followed him one day, on the top of this one road, which I go to the farm, there's big rocks in the road, okay? And, and it's no different than east of Harvey, which calls the dump ground road. All those rocks, have you ever drove behind a blade operator when he's trying to blade those roads when there's rocks? And throws him out of the cab, that's how it jerks the blade around. Well, those rocks should be removed, that isn't our job, that's a township job. That's another example how, fix it or we're not, now, that sounds like a real hard nose and really being mean, but that's the township's responsibility.
Yeah. Liv, Liv used to, on the dump ground road where the guy bought, uh, what's his name that moved out of Harvey, went to Maddock?
Walters.
Walters Place, he's gotta drive.
Well, right there.
Get in the pavement, and then he's gotta drive on a nasty road to get to his driveway.
Only about fifty feet.
I know that, but it's just, and nobody, nobody can fix it.
Well, it's cause it's all rocks.
That road would have to be totally redone.
I know, but I mean, at least in his driveway, they could, you know, but the township won't touch that either.
I will tell you this, and a year and a half ago, I bought five sets of carbide cutting edges for the blades, five sets. It was ten grand, two thousand dollars a set, okay? Currently, we have them on four blades, we have one extra set. The one blade we, we put him on was a pheasant and blade at the beginning of May, he's still got them on. His, his cutting edges are square, it knocks a few chunks of carbide out, but his roads are squared. And if you have seven or eight blades and you spend sixteen thousand dollars a year on a set of edges that lasts a year, it's the way to go, guys. These guys aren't underneath these machines all the time, the, the edges that are on that spare machine we have right now were put on thirteen months ago, and they look like new, and that thing has been up and down pavement, it's bladed, it's pulled shoulders, the two Harvey guys now have a set. And it's, as we run out of edges, I'm not ordering any edges from any, right now, we're using the edges that we have. But in a year or two, when it's time to do a big, uh, upcut, a cutting edge order, you might see me getting one set of edges for each machine for an entire year. Anything else for Brent?
He was here for a record large amount of time.
You did all the talking.
There you go.
What are you talking about?
Hey, wait a minute, you weren't gonna give Booney crap this year, what's your deal?
I thought, I thought about that, and I knew I couldn't.
You did a lot of the talking. Okay, let's move on, um, we got, uh, the, uh,
you got a couple of.
County boards, and we gotta go back to portfolios probably too, huh?
Yeah, why don't you just go there and we'll finish this up.
Okay, um, so discussion I've heard is, these are usually good for two years, we're on the first year of it. Kind of everybody talked and was okay with leaving the things they are, for everybody here, correct?
I'm sorry, I was. Okay, I'm gonna get out. Yeah, thank you, guys.
The one thing I would mention about that, you know what, as, as is proved right here, we got some really good employees. And just because you're a portfolio, doesn't mean that that's the only one we visit with. There's a lot of employees that are more comfortable visiting with Boon probably than me or you. Do that, you know, make yourself available to everybody. Your portfolio means that that's their go-between, between their work and, and the commissioners. So, you know, just kinda keep that in mind. I guess our job with being a portfolio is support for those people. And, uh, we're not there to be their boss, we're there to support them, whatever we need, okay? Anything else on the portfolio deal, uh, anybody got anything to report on portfolios? I guess we talked about county agent, where we don't know where we're at really there.
Right, well, that's actually what's right.
Brent went way over time of mind, anybody else?
Well.
Jana was here.
Jana was here, and I, I guess I would, I would ask, is what do you wanna, what do you wanna do with, like, to beat that horse up? Nothing, as far as these businesses that are ag-related, nothing? Have Vanguard do it, shit?
No, we just, we just kinda had a roundabout discussion about, wouldn't it be lovely if everybody followed the rules of the road?
Paying taxes ain't any different. God dang it, if you're supposed to be paying taxes, then pay your damn taxes.
And you know, there is.
What, because they're not assessed, that's all.
But I don't know why we're reluctant to step on somebody's toes here.
We're not, I'd be all for, but, but, okay, because we've talked about this for three years, and Jana is extremely reluctant to do it because she doesn't have a template to assess stuff.
We have, we have.
Vanguard though.
It has an ongoing budgetary item for her, I'm not so sure there isn't sixteen or twenty thousand dollars on that line item.
What, what I, I?
Her budget has Vanguard.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So.
But we need to tell her that in order for her to do that. If, if, if that's the consensus, and it is with me, because it's, it's not fair to the seed dealers that are currently paying taxes, you know, and Leon brought that up when he was here.
Somebody's.
You know, he wasn't a farmer, he paid, you know, so.
And they don't necessarily.